Very good, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, July 11, 2022. A recording of this meeting will be available on the Town of Lexington Cable Information Channel 1301 and on the town's YouTube channel. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Steve Baker if he would give tonight's opening invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lord Jesus, we just come for you this evening. We just offer you our gratitude. You just bless us and you bless our community in so many different ways, and we just thank you for that. We pray, God, that you'll give us wisdom as we do the business of the town, and we just pray for your blessings over our community, over our businesses, over our families. And, um, Lord God, we just, um, thank you so much for all the ways that you're good to us. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, I would like to ask Lexington County's very own veteran retired First Lieutenant Tom Lucas if you would come join us at the microphone and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Mr. Lucas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lucas, thank you very much for being with us. We'd love to hear from you and love to know more about you if you wouldn't mind sharing a few words with us. We appreciate you taking the time.
I'm a lifetime resident of Lexington County. I spent, I got out of high school on a Friday night. Monday morning, I was in basic training at Fort Jackson. That was in 1960. Graduated Brooklyn KC. At that time, we didn't have it one high school in Lexington County, plus Lexington. But I spent twenty-one years in the Army, two tours in Vietnam, one with the 1st Division, one with the 25th Division, and one with the 4th Division. One of them was split in half. I retired as an enlisted man, Sergeant Major E9. After ten years on the retired list, they give you your highest rank. Actually, I made captain, but he said I didn't hold it long enough, so, you know, I give it back to him. I'm still getting my money. But, uh, I, uh, I'm a combat infantryman. I hold a Silver Star, Legion of Merit, Bronze Star, Army Convention for Valor. Yet to me, it's across a gallantry and a number of other awards that are down the line a little bit. But I am proud of my service. I'm proud of myself that I completed this, and I'll be eighty years old next month, so I'm still hanging in there.
Good for you, Mr. Lucas. We're awfully proud of you, too, and thank you for being a part of our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We'll move right into deletion of agenda items. I'd like to delete item, new item number six from the agenda. This was a board appointment. We're going to pull that for tonight's meeting. Anyone else have anything they'd like to delete on tonight's agenda? Very good. At this time, we'll move into presentations. Our first presentation for this evening, I want to welcome Beth Wingard. Ms. Wingard, if you would, please come forward. This is the Senior Major Gift Officer at Lexington Medical Center. Welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. On behalf of Lexington Medical Center Foundation, I'm here with y'all this evening to share how thankful, thankful, thankful we are to the Town of Lexington employees who so graciously selected to support our foundation programs this year. Your employees went above and beyond. They gave more to date than they ever have, fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Those funds are going to support cancer care programs for our patients, cardiac care programs, mother baby needs, for patients of Lexington Medical Center. So to date, in the past five years, in fact, your employees have donated nearly seventy thousand dollars. So think about that for just a second. Seventy thousand dollars, that's a lot of impact, and that's a lot of lives touched. So we really cannot say enough about how grateful we are to those employees, not only for what they do every day, in their dedication and their investment, and what makes this community a great place to live and to work, but in their generosity in supporting the foundation's mission and providing help to our neighbors and those we care about. So we just want to say thank you on behalf of the foundation for that opportunity and for those gifts.
Fantastic. Ms. Wingard, thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us.
Would you mind if I had a quick picture with you?
Thank you again for being with us. Take care. And to all the employees that donated, thank y'all very much. It's very generous of what you have done in providing assistance to our community in the way that you did. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into a vision plan update for July 11, 2022. Foundation work for the wayfinding signs is in process of being finished up. Next, you will soon see signs going up in the downtown corridor. This is the first phase of the wayfinding project, which helps direct people to popular places in downtown Lexington and also popular parking places in downtown Lexington. Virginia Hilton Park is part of the preconstruction phase for Virginia Hilton Park renovation and expansion. We are coordinating with the contractor to finalize plans. We expect to start construction later this summer on a portion of the project. This is a complete overhaul that will double the size of the park, and it will include all new equipment and new features. These are just some of the projects that are part of the town's vision plan. For a complete list, please visit our website at lexse.com. At this time, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to everyone that helped with redirecting traffic this past Thursday due to the gas main break at Interstate 20 and Highway 1. We appreciate everyone's patience as public agencies work to keep us safe during this unfortunate situation, and we all know that it was a nightmare. In the coming months, two new construction projects are set to begin along Highway 378. There will be a single lane widening along North Lake Drive from Northwood Drive to Sunset Boulevard, and an intersection improvement project at Sunset Boulevard and Old Cherokee Road. Both these projects will be mostly night work. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for September the 14th, 2022, at 8:00 AM, and please call 803-358-7273 to report any traffic issues that you see.
Thank you very, very much, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we'll move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5498-05-002, located in the 100 Block of Industrial Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-016, located at 455 Old Cherokee Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4496-02-154, located at 2677 Mineral Springs Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number four, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5423-04-006, located at 107 Mill Street. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number five, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-03-056, located at the 5400 Block of Augusta Road. Does anyone wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number six, final reading of an ordinance amending the common nuisance ordinance. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Final reading of an ordinance leasing the South Carolina Highway Patrol. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Very good. Our last item this evening, item number eight, final reading of an ordinance approving Sorinex as a multi-county industrial park. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearing for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5498-05-002, located in the 100 Block of Industrial Drive. Ms. Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. James Ginyard owns 4.08 acres located in the 100 Block of Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently underdeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and general commercial. Industrial Drive, South Lake Drive, and Interstate 20 are all classified as arterial roads. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended industrial zoning for the property and arterial road classification for industrial drive. I make a final motion for a final reading approval to annex the property.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-016, located at 455 Old Cherokee Road. Councilmember Corns?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Lexington School District 1 owns 34.53 acres located at 455 Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Lakeside Middle School is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned limited commercial and protected residential. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended general commercial zoning for the parcel and collector road classification for Old Cherokee Road. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Corns makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4496-02-154, located at 2677 Mineral Springs. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared and Caitlin Smith own four acres located at 2677 Mineral Springs Road and have petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently undeveloped, but a single-family home is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and protected residential 2. Mineral Springs Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and the collector road classification for Mineral Springs Road. Final reading approval to annex the property.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Manis, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle?
Being a previous owner of this property, I would excuse myself.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else have anything? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5423-04-006, located at 107 Mill Street. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Linda M. Crispino owns a parcel located at 107 Mill Street and has petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Mill Street is classified as an RL2 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the parcel and RL2 classification for Mill Street. I make a motion for final reading approval to annex the property.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We'll move right into item number five. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-03-056, located in the 5400 Block of Augusta Road. Councilmember Todd Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. MW2RELLC owns approximately 1.5 acres located in the 5400 Block of Augusta Road and has petitioned to annex this property. Property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission has reviewed this annexation during their June meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for final reading approval to annex this property.
Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, second. Set. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We'll move into item number six. This is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. This is final reading of an ordinance amending the common nuisance ordinance. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is asking Town Council to consider amending ordinance 93.20C, which addresses weeds, grass, and overgrowth. There's, there is the possibility that enforcement becomes confusing because there are different penalties for violations of Section A and C in 93.20. Staff is asking that Section C be separated from 93.20 and become a standalone portion of the Code of Ordinance. I make a motion for final reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Brad, one question. I would assume this makes it easier for us to enforce those violations. Cleans it up a little bit. No pun intended there. Sorry about that. Very good. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. This is final reading of an ordinance leasing to the South Carolina Highway Patrol. Councilmember Manis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. South Carolina Highway Patrol has leased space in the Lexington Municipal Complex since 2006. Prior to this agreement, troopers had to drive to Shop Road in Columbia to write reports, have in-office meetings, et cetera. It is felt by keeping the Lexington troop in Lexington, they can act as a force multiplier with the Lexington PD, improving protection for citizens. The current contract is subject to expire soon. Staff has been working with the Highway Patrol staff to negotiate a new contract. The new contract has a three-year term with two automatic extensions of a year each if neither party gives notice. There is a 5% increase in the rental fee for the first year and an additional 2% increase each following year. I make a motion for final reading of an ordinance leasing to the South Carolina Highway Patrol.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. This is final reading of an ordinance approving Sorinex as a multi-county industrial park. Councilmember Corns?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Town Council is being asked to approve the creation of a multi-county industrial park. As outlined by the attached proposed ordinance, the subject property is owned by Sorinex Exercise Equipment, Inc. Sorinex property is located in the town, and Section 4-1-170 of the Code provides that a municipality must consent to the creation or expansion of a multi-county industrial or business park which encompasses property located within such municipality. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Corns makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is first reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County Tax Map Number 4326-03-001, located at the 800 Hendrix Street, from Protected Residential 2 to Office Commercial. Councilmember Ron Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. William Graham with Team MKC LLC submitted a request to rezone approximately .31 acres located at 800 Hendrix Street from Protected Residential 2 to Office Commercial. A single-family home is located on the site. The applicant is requesting rezoning to allow multi-use commercial office space on the property. Property is adjacent to this one or zoned general commercial, limited commercial, and protected residential. The Planning Commission reviewed this request during their June meeting and recommended against the requested zoning change. Based on the citizens that have contacted me and the recommendation of the Planning Commission, I'm going to make a motion to deny rezoning.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns, second. Substitution. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir, Mr. Poole.
So the motion is for a negative, so a yes vote would be agreeing to deny. Just wanted to be clear so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please.
Yes.
Excuse me. Is this your item?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Why don't you come forward, introduce yourself. We'll give you just a few minutes, okay?
Appreciate that.
If you would, introduce yourself and let us know your address, please.
Sure. Yeah, I am William Graham, the one who set the request, and our address is, I guess our business address is on, we're actually on 713 West Main Street, right there on the corner.
Okay.
We took over the old Payless shoe store.
Okay.
So we are a general contractor and home remodeler, and so we've been approached by a couple of people in the neighborhood, specifically Letitia Davis, who had the idea for a neighborhood grocery store. And she seems to be not only very well-connected, but also very well, not only in favor of this, but seems to think that the community is and would be served well by it also. To add some further information, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but Thompson Street, which is the side road that runs between Lex Med and our building, which where Payless is, is having a traffic light moved down to accommodate the new traffic that's going to flow through to Thompson Street. And according to my understanding from Town of Lexington, the traffic is expected to triple down that road. They're also adding a right turn lane to accommodate traffic leaving Thompson, turning right onto 378. So, number of factors there. So, one of the concerns was when they repaved that road, there's going to be very high-density traffic compared to what it was previously. And as was previously mentioned by Mr. Williams, there are surrounding neighborhoods on both sides of the street that are commercial. So if you look at the way that Hendrix, that parcel of land is kind of set up, there's three triangles, there's three corners to the triangle, I guess, and two of them are pretty much already zoned commercial. This would be the third one, the only one that's not, and so I think that kind of speaks to us. But also, there was a public safety hazard as far as pedestrian traffic, because when they repaved that road and they bring that light to it, it's going to, again, not only triple the car count, but there's a corner on the outside corner of 800 Hendrix that, which is the parcel that we're requesting to have rezoned. And our concern is when you triple, when you triple car traffic and you add a traffic light there, and it's already kind of a confusing, if you'll look at the way that it's mapped out, it's kind of a confusing intersection as it is. So between a brand-new road, which is going to make it basically a highway for the speeds that people, people already come down that road pretty fast, I can attest to that because we're there all day, but when it becomes a brand-new asphalt and newly striped, then you're going to have a lot of pedestrian traffic coming down the sidewalks that are required for Lex Med to add their, their new building on the other side. Basically, when you put all that together, our concern is partly for, mainly for pedestrian traffic, but then further, again, if there's interest in the community and, you know, a well-respected and represented member of the community who has ties and who has interest in bettering the community for a grocery store was her idea with community delivery, something that the area sort of needed. So when you kind of put those pieces together, we felt like that made a pretty compelling argument to consider.
Very good. Thank you. I just have one question for you real quick. Did the Planning Commission know you were going to put in a grocery store here?
They did not.
They did not?
They did not. We were actually, so when we petitioned for this, they, the town was kind enough to expedite us.
Right.
Move us ahead of, we actually missed the cutoff when we were actually putting it in, just because that's just how it fell in the calendar. So they weren't aware at the time that I think that there was specific interest from the community and then specifically what the interest was. And again, that may have fallen back on us for not being as diligent on the front end to get that information where it should have been. So again, we, you know, we take the, we take the brunt of the hit on that one.
Yeah.
But I don't think that they were aware.
Okay.
And we'd like to, we have some really good plans put together. We've got some other local grocery stores that we've actually helped to put together that have come to fruition over, over the last year or two. Again, being that we are a residential remodeler, but also a commercial general contractor. So our job is to, we feel like is, we have a duty to the community to bring it up and make it better. And we feel like with the condition of that home as it is, as it's in currently, and with the traffic just going to come down it, with the pedestrian traffic that's going to increase, there's a lot of pieces and parts that go into it. So it's not just a simple, you know, smashing and grab. Kind of, we want to just switch it over to make sure.
Sure.
We're really looking to bring value to the community and safety as well.
Very good. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
So have you had a meeting with the community up there to discuss this with them, to make them understand and to feel comfortable with what you're thinking of?
That's, that's part of what we're working on as well. So we actually have, not to complicate it, but we've got a couple of properties that we're procuring through that area. Two of them are on the end of Thompson Street, actually on the other side from where Payless is. So I'm sure you guys are familiar. Lex Med has got their new development. They're working directly behind the corner of Thompson and 378. They've got a three-story building going up there, and we're working on consolidating some lots on Thompson Street. There's an old coin laundry there on the corner, and then back from there, there's a two-story block building that's just, doesn't really serve much purpose directly across from the entrance of Lex Med. And so our, our goal there, again, in trying to further in health development of the community, is to eliminate those old abandoned buildings and try to bring something of value, of fruit to the community. That's our goal. So.
Very good.
We, we have, to answer your question, yes, ma'am, we have met with them, and we're working with several members to try to, try to move, move our idea forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks.
May I?
Yes, sir, Mr. Corns.
Seems like the obvious question is if you're, if you're procuring the properties on the other side of the road, which are already zoned commercially, why wouldn't you put your grocery store there?
So two different, two different approaches. So we, we currently are outgrowing, we've outgrown our, our space there on the corner of Thompson and 378. We bought that building with the intention of it being a nothing. It absolutely wasn't. We leave some bounds really quick. So we're actually looking to consolidate those spaces, and because it's on the same street, it would be really convenient for our owner-occupied space to actually have that space as well. So we're looking to expand our, our ventures professionally on this side of the street, but separately, there was, again, interest from the community. So we felt like, you know, if we can, if we can lend our services and help move that direction, that's what we're doing.
So for those properties, I mean, do you have a plan for those properties, or is that a speculative buy?
We do, we have, we've actually presented that to the town already. We met last week. We showed them our ideas, and they seem to be very much in favor of it. So again, our, our goal here is not to just make a quick buck. We really are trying to do our best to put back into the community because, you know, we, we live, we live right around here too, and we want to make it better. So if we can, if we can capitalize on the fact that the town is already, the town and Lex Med are already working together to make, to revitalize that street, then why leave the, the two black eyes on the corner? Let's, let's try to bring it up and create a full envelope of, you know, clean and well-presented town.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir, Ms. Lyle.
I'd be curious if there's anybody else. I know Ms. Constance back there. I'd like to hear if somebody's got another opinion as well.
Sure. I'd be happy to step aside.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Constance, if you don't mind. Yes, Ms. Constance, if you don't mind. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Constance Carrick of Fleming, and I reside at 604 Hendrick Street and 606 Hendrick Street and 604 and a half Hendrick Street because I am now, it is under probate and I am now in charge of all three properties. And, um, actually, we have had a community meeting about this discussion and we went to the, um, planning, uh, meeting to let them know. One of our major concerns is the fact of the businesses coming in on us now and stopping us from being the, the protected residential area that we are. And that was one of the big deals with, um, the house on the corner that is being discussed at this point, um, is that the individuals fought long and hard to make sure that it was going to stay residential so it would not come any further and create any issues in our area. Much of what he has said, um, yes, that is going to be a change and that's because of what is going on with the hospital. But the hospital is still out on the road and we are in. And this situation here is going to create a very tight situation, I know, for me and my property. And I'm just not speaking for me because there were others from all over that area that came to this particular meeting, which I, I don't know what meeting he had, but the meeting that we had and all was in total agreement that we did not want any other commercial business coming in at that point.
Not an exact number, but a round number. How many people were at that meeting?
It was about 12.
Very good.
And two of them are here tonight, this evening as well.
Very good.
So, um, like I said, we, and we knew nothing about any of these plans, not even to say that it was going to change our opinions one way or the other. We are concerned at this point that it seems that we're getting pushed in as far as businesses are concerned. I mean, a grocery store is fine, but then if you're going to have the grocery store and you're going to have this and then next thing you know, we're going to need that. And I have already been in a situation where I've had people after me, after me about my property, and it is not for sale. However, if it continues this way, we, we're going to be blocked in. So, we all going to end up having to do that. And, and quite frankly, I, we are a residential area and we would like to stay that way.
Thank you, Ms. Constance.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Padalino, Realtor with EXP Realty and Broker. I am living at 171 Fitz Warren Court over here in Lexington in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. Been a Realtor in the area for over 23 years and before that, used to run the 20 Milo food stores here. Um, I represent a lot of people in this scenario and I've talked to Ms. Fleming and a lot of the people in the area. I didn't know they had that meeting and I wasn't at it. Um, but I do represent Shirley Harris, who now owns that house in question and her husband, Sherrell, before that. Sherrell had worked 30 years for Walmart and he, and he's since passed. Shirley's never lived in the house and it was built and used as a, um, way place for alcoholics, et cetera. So, nobody's really lived there as, as a resident owner. Mr. Harris would come by and take care of it and he had a live-in person there. That, uh, house is on three corners and I, I want everybody to realize that, that there's Gray Street and Hendrick Street and it's right there on that corner.
Sure.
It's right across from the hospital. No residential home is probably ever going to go there because of the three streets and the traffic. Who wants to live in that house? And Mrs. Harris wants to sell and we have a great offer from, um, the gentleman that spoke earlier and his group that want to turn it into, and whatever is natural for that subdivision. Now, we, we, and I don't, I don't mean subdivision, but for that area. There is a commercial building right across the street. It's a, um, mortuary, um, place. And right, the other two houses are, are buildings that were commercial down the street on Thompson Street. Has been an eyesore in this area forever. I've been trying to help these people sell these properties for a long time and I get calls from the police department, this and that, when are you going to do something with the property? Well, we finally have somebody with the means and capability and he built a beautiful store right there on the corner where the shoe store used to be.
Sure.
If you look at that and see, you get an idea of what can happen. Now, we were contacted by Ms. Davis, who lives in the neighborhood, also two houses from Ms. Fleming. She just came back to the area and she, uh, she lived up by the Lexington High School. She, she called me and she, she wants to put a grocery store in there. So, we haven't had a chance to pursue that, but her and, uh, Matt are, are talking about doing the grocery store. But it isn't a grocery store like you think. This would just be a little convenience-type store, serving the neighborhood, hiring, she, her, her vision is to hire children that live in the neighborhood to deliver groceries to the neighborhood and help improve that, that whole area. And that's her intention. So, Shirley, Shirley Harris asked me to convey to you, she really wants to sell this. We've got a good offer for it. Don't see anybody buying it as a residential home. The neighborhood's going to be improved tremendously if the council will work with the, the plans that are coming up. And I think you should relook at this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. Yes, sir, come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Aaron Gant. I live at 103 Gray Street along with my wife. We've been there for a period of about 25 years. Just wanted to reiterate to the council, as Ms. Fleming has already stated, the importance of keeping our community, our West Main community intact as is. The property that is in question, uh, that we're concerning tonight, that came before the Planning Commission, is a beautiful spot. The Harris family has done a wonderful job, uh, since they removed the older house and built there. It is a beautiful spot for a residential family. It is fenced in. As many of you probably have been by the property and seen, uh, we understand the traffic situation. That's Lexington. We understand that. We have a tremendous amount of foot traffic through, uh, our neighborhood, along with Central Midlands, our veterans that are there. But we certainly want to urge to the council, uh, the importance of keeping the West Main community intact as is and keeping this, uh, residential piece as residential. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Wester. 926 Hendrick Street. Uh, I was born and raised right there on Hendrick Street and, um, I've seen the community grow, even though our elder people have passed away and left the property to us. And we don't want to see our neighborhood turn into no commercial. We want to keep it as it is. We can improve it. I'll say, you know, we can improve our neighborhood. We don't need no commercial coming in. We got enough traffic and stuff coming up through as is. But we find the way we are.
Very good. Thank you for your time, sir. Good to see you, Mr. Wester. Yes, sir, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Edwards, um, they're bringing up testing traffic issue, but if you could help me remember correctly, I believe Lex Medical Center and the town have come up with a plan to put a sidewalk all the way down to the red light so that folks can safely cross the road into the food line, parking lot?
Yes, there will be a sidewalk on the current LMC-developed property side. Because our ordinance requires property they own to go against. So, and then it will come down to the, to the extent of the new building. It'll be partway down Thompson Street on one side and all the way down to Gray on the other side.
Looking at that, you've approved that roadwork, so is there any safety issues there that you know of?
No, all that is going to go through SEDOT for review and approval. So, the road is planned to be widened, I mean, it's ever so slightly, it's about 30 inches in total. It's about 18 inches on both sides. And then curb gutter sidewalk, um, curb and gutter is the extent of Thompson Street. Sidewalk is the limit, I'd explain.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir, Mr. Baker. Call for the question. Thank you, Mr. Baker. There is a call for the question. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion is denied. Back to my agenda. Our next item of new business is from Council, Councilmember Steve Baker. This is first reading of an ordinance rezoning Lexington County tax map number 4324-04-002 located at 111 School Drive from limited commercial to protected residential. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Gary Page has submitted a request to rezone .58 acres located at 111 School Drive from limited commercial to protected residential. The property is currently undeveloped. Properties adjacent to this one are zoned limited commercial and protected residential. Planning Commission reviewed this request during their June meeting and recommended approval of the rezoning. I'll make a motion for first reading.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is first reading of an ordinance adopting the pending ordinance doctrine. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council is asked to consider formally adopting the pending ordinance doctrine as allowed and codified by the South Carolina Supreme Court. The town has been using the doctrine in practice, but formal adoption has been requested. The doctrine allows the town to deny a building permit or other zoning or development proposal when the proposal contradicts a pending and then later enacted zoning ordinance. A draft of the proposed ordinance has been attached and I would, Mr. Mayor, move for first reading approval of this pending ordinance doctrine.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pretim Hazel Livingston. This is first reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the KC Police Department and the Greenville County Sheriff's Office. Mayor Pretim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the KC Police Department. Also, the Lexington Police Department is requesting the removal of the KC Department of Public Safety from the LPD mutual aid agreement with multiple jurisdictions list. The proposed agreement for the KC Police Department is attached. The Lexington Police Department has received a request for a mutual aid agreement with Greenville County Sheriff's Office. The pro, the proposed agreement is attached. I make a re, motion for first reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the KC Police Department and Greenville County Sheriff's Office.
Mayor Pretim makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Collins, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is first reading of an ordinance to sell property near Tybo Drive. Councilmember Carnes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. 29 Acre Wood LLC is requesting to buy town property off Tybo Drive. Parcel is identified as by tax map number 004330-02-012. It contains approximately 2.84 acres and is comprised of wetlands. The potential sale would include a reverter clause wherein the buyer is required to leave the property in its natural state. A violation of the clause would cause title to the property to revert back to the town. 29 Acre Wood LLC is adjoining, is the adjoining property owner. I make a motion for first reading approval of this sale.
Councilmember Collins makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. This is the one that we took off of tonight's agenda. And that concludes our business for this evening. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you to my council and to my Town of Lexington family for the support that you've given me over the last couple of months. I am proud to be on Town Council for 17 years and I'm proud of the work that we've done and the votes that I have taken on Town Council. And I am proud to have been the first person from South Carolina to serve as the President of the National League of Cities. I will always be proud of that. And it is just, uh, I don't know a good word. It is sad that my opponent used the good things that we do in the Town of Lexington against me. So, again, I'm very honored to serve with you and honored to have been the President of the National League of Cities. So, uh, Mayor McDougal will celebrate his birthday before we get together again, and so I'd like to wish him a happy birthday on August the 13th.
God.
A happy birthday.
Thank you.
The Ice House Amphitheater continues to host many wonderful concerts, including Sister Hazel, not our Sister Hazel, but Sister Hazel, the group, on July 23rd, starting at 6 o'clock, and tickets are $32. Rock of Ages will be here, August 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, starting at 7 o'clock, and tickets are $30. And we cannot forget the Market at Ice House every Saturday through September 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So, come out and enjoy the music, the food trucks, and support our local vendors. We have several meetings lined up for July, including the Board of Apairance, which will meet tomorrow night at 5:30. The Planning Commission will meet on July the 20th at 8:00 a.m. in the council chambers. And we will meet, our council will meet again on August the 15th at 6:00 for the council work session, followed by our regular council meeting. On behalf of the mayor and my fellow council members, we would like to thank you for tuning in tonight for this Town Council meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Yes.
Not yet, Ms. Constance, not yet. But I'll call on you before we finish, okay? Any other council members have anything they'd like to share? Very good. Any questions from the news media tonight? I thought they were here, but I think they found out Ms. Constance was going to be here and they said no need for us to show up? All right, Ms. Constance, thank you. Thank you for waiting.
I say, thank you. I stand here with pride for many reasons. Ms. Kathy Manus, thank you for doing all that you have done. We appreciate it and you made us proud just to take on that responsibility. To my council members, I say thank you for standing with us and helping us to continue to be a vital part of this community. I tell you, I, I'm, I'm bursting with pride and I will be eternally grateful. So, thank you. We thank you and we appreciate you because I know it's not, you know I know it's not easy. It's not easy. And sometimes decisions have to be made and we don't necessarily, you know. But I have pretty much always known this council to make a decision based on information and based on what they thought was going to be best for the citizens of the town. So, I want to say, and I know a lot of times the citizens don't get a chance to say it, but I want to say thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Constance.
Early happy birthday. Do I get to sing to you?
Oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
That was perfect.
And many more.
We missed that singing.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to share tonight from the public? Anyone wish to talk about anything on the agenda tonight? Gentlemen, good? I'm going to take you with me next time I go talk about traffic somewhere, could you? It's just Lexington.
That's just Lexington.
Very good. Thank you all for being with us. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town of Lexington Council meeting. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, July 11, 2022. Recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel 1301 several times during the week, and the video will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Without objection, we are adjourned.